Just. Waiting for the recording as well, so we'll just wait till this populates a little bit more. There's only about thirteen or fourteen on here right now. So at least that's all I'm seeing. So I'll just talk through this a little bit. Just mentioned, you know, typically I'm in my SB guard, but you know. Yeah, well, the side, yeah, one for the Penguins, you know, probably want to not going to be the greatest season, but we'll get through it. It looks like the list has slowed down from the population standpoint, so. I'm going to say that we are probably safe to go ahead and get started. So again, I'd like to welcome everyone, and this is the Seneca Valley School District School Board Action Meeting of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And at this time, I'm going to introduce Ms. Linda Andracy to introduce the moment of silence, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight for our moment of silence, I'd like to highlight that we are doing this tonight in memory of Dr. Lyle Miller. Dr. Miller is a former Seneca Valley School Board member and School Board President. And we would ask that you keep his family and his friends.
Listen, Tracy, you were muted towards the end. If you could say that again, please, no worries.
We're holding tonight's moment of silence in memory of Dr. Lyle Miller, who is a former Seneca Valley School Board member and School Board President. He was a very active member of our community in Harmony especially, and we ask that you keep his friends and his family in your thoughts during our moment of silence.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andracy, if you move on and introduce our I Led the Pledge.
Yes, absolutely. Tonight's student for I Led the Pledge is Nolan Buxton. He is a first grader from Evan City Elementary School. He is the son of Michaela Buxton of Evan City. He was nominated this evening by Evan City Principal, Ms. Lori Pendred. Nolan's mom tells us his favorite subject is physical education and that when he grows up, Nolan wants to be a nurse or a police officer. When asked what his thoughts are on his school and his community, he said that Evan City Elementary is a great place to learn. And I quote, "That God rated our town a five out of five," he said, "because as he explained, there was a double rainbow over his neighbor's house recently." So she wanted to share that with us, too. So now we're going to hear directly from Nolan. At this time, I would ask that the board and administration turn off their videos, and I would invite everyone watching to please stand if they are able and join us as Nolan leads us all in the pledge of allegiance. So Dr. Polano, when you are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let everyone's video come back on. Still my most favorite part of our meetings. Looks like we're all back, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask Ms. Mizlin to call the roll, please.
Ms. Bridle.
Here.
Mr. DiTullio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Widowson.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the information reports. Ms. Andracy, you got the heavy lift again.
Thanks again, Mr. President. Under item A tonight for dates to remember, just a reminder that October is National Principals Month and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. October sixteenth, which is this Saturday, the senior high school will be hosting a PSAT testing event. On October twenty-second, that will be the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice Cyber End of First Nine Weeks for Grades seven through twelve. October twenty-second and the twenty-ninth will be the district-wide Pinkout Day in recognition again of breast cancer awareness. October twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth will be Red Ribbon Week, and just to give you some background, at the end of October, each year we recognize and actively participate in this national drug prevention program. The activities this year include school-wide messages and pledges that will encourage students to commit to a drug-free lifestyle. They will also have the opportunity to participate in daily drug-free themes like Wednesday's Team Up and Be Drug-Free by Wearing SB Colors or SB Spirit Wear. More information on these activities and more can be found in your backup. And then October twenty-seventh, that will be the end of the first nine weeks for grades seven through twelve who are in in-person learning. So then moving on, under item B for student-staff recognition, this evening, we would like to recognize Rachel Kremel, who was crowned Seneca Valley's Homecoming Queen, and Cooper Saniak, who was named SV Homecoming King, and you can see them on the screen there. They were named during the district's pre-game festivities at Next Tier Stadium on Friday, October eighth. Rachel's the daughter of Bruce and Denise Kremel of Cranberry Township. Cooper is the son of Keith and Kimberly Saniak of Cranberry Township. And if you watched the homecoming football game at Next Tier Stadium on Friday evening, you may know it went into double overtime. And in an exciting finish, the Raiders came out with the win against Cannon Mac, twenty-four to seventeen. And I also want to take this time to highlight the incredible amount of effort and work that took place by our staff during homecomings' three-day festivities, but especially on Saturday when we hosted two outdoor homecoming dances for well over fifteen hundred students. There are too many staff members to list by name, but I really wanted to highlight these individuals for going above and beyond for our kids so that they could have these wonderful activities for homecoming. Just wanted to mention that. Under the number two, under item B, Special Olympics, this is Nick Leggero. He's a senior high school student, and he is pictured here with Taylor Wagstaff. Taylor is a member of the Seneca Valley Class of twenty twenty-one. The two were both recently named winners of the twenty twenty-one Leadership Award by Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools. These awards were given at the annual UCS Leadership Conference, which was held virtually over the weekend. And the duo received the award for their efforts and involvement during their time at Seneca Valley. Specifically, Taylor organized and facilitated our first polar plunge fundraiser, raising over four thousand dollars for the Special Olympics, and Nick was an active member of the team. The Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools builds on Special Olympics values, principles, practices, experiences, and impacts to shape a generation that welcomes everyone. And I think you'll agree with me when I say that Nick and Taylor both represent the importance and the impact of inclusion. Under item C this evening, the Pennsylvania School Bus Association recently announced that five Seneca Valley drivers were selected for the twenty twenty-one PSBA Safe Driver Awards. Each driver was awarded for providing service that goes above and beyond. And in the case of our Seneca Valley drivers who are pictured there, they also have at least twenty consecutive years of bus driving without accidents. ABC Transit drivers Herb Fletcher, Kathy Richards, Linda Scheidemantel, Pam Kosky, and the late Ray Albert were recently selected for the award. And I'm pleased at this time to welcome in a special guest this evening, Mr. Todd O'Shale is joining us. Mr. O'Shale is the Vice President of Operations for ABC Transit, and he wanted to share more with you about these drivers and this incredible honor. I also told him this might be a great time to highlight the need for bus drivers and the benefits that one might experience by signing up. So Todd, I see you there. Welcome in. And I'll turn it over to you if you want to share a little bit about the drivers who won the award.
Sure. Thank you very much, and I apologize. I don't have as nice of a background as everyone on the call. But tonight, thank you, Linda. We would like to thank the Seneca Valley School Board for lauding this time tonight to share some positive news about busing. The Pennsylvania School Bus Association Safe Driver Rewards Program was established to recognize the efforts of school bus drivers who are dedicated to providing the safest ride for their passengers. Nominated by their companies, drivers are honored for having multiple years of continuous safe driving. Tonight, we honor five of those ABC Transit drivers, as Linda mentioned, from the Seneca Valley School District who have reached these requirements and have been providing safe driving for many years. Our first honoree is Bus fifty-eight driver Pam Kosky, who has twenty years of safe driving. Pam is the model of flexibility and has performed multiple routes over her career, doing whatever asked of her, which is more difficult than just doing the same run over and over each day. She's a stickler for details on her route, providing a safe bus trip for her students is the top priority every day. We thank Pam for her shining example of safe driving. Next is the driver of Bus thirty-eight Clarence Herb Fletcher. He also has twenty years of safe driving. Herb is usually given difficult routes as well, knowing that it will be done right in his hands. His attention to detail and meticulous care of his students is one of the reasons he is being recognized. Herb is currently off work right now while caring for his wife, but we hope to see him back soon to continue the safe driving record he has shown over the last twenty years. In the thirty years of safe driving category, if you really think about this, twenty years, thirty years, we're going to go further and further. It's significant in the amount of time these drivers have gone without accidents. But in the thirty-year category is Bus Three driver Kathy Richards. Kathy lives by the safety code and is exceptionally detailed with driving her bus route. She's always thinking of safety first, which results in safer conditions for her students. She views the students as her own, being devoted to their safety and well-being. And while Kathy is currently off work and sorely missed, she's checked in with her students, and we hope she can return soon, so another outstanding driver is back on the road. Our next recognition is given posthumously to the late Ray Albert, driver of Bus twenty-nine. And Ray had forty years of safe driving, and we nominated Ray prior to Ray becoming sick. It was back in June, and unfortunately, as you heard last week, Ray was sick and eventually passed away. But everyone knew Ray by his commanding voice on the radio and around the garage. And I remember the first time in two thousand sixteen hearing secondary dismissal over the radio, and I heard some guy say, "Fourteen fifty, time to take him home," and my question was, "Who is that?" And it was Ray Albert. Ray was always giving routine time checks, giving guidance to other drivers, and he was extremely dedicated to his job and his students. He was an extremely conscientious driver and always attentive to the details of his daily route. He knew each student by name personally. He knew their family and has transported generations of students safely, and most importantly, on time. And I have to share a real quick story. Ray's memorial service was last Saturday, and we heard a story of a student that was raised on Ray's bus who got a job and eventually ended up with a promotion. And the boss looked at the former student and said, "Who taught you to be so time-conscious?" And he said, "My bus driver Ray," and the boss said, "You need to go thank him," which the student did, and it just showed the impact Ray had on students. Ray was an amazing driver for Seneca Valley and will be sorely missed. Our final honoree for forty-five years, and I'll say that again, forty-five years of safe driving, is Bus twenty-three driver Linda Scheidemantel. Linda has been a constant in the Seneca Valley School District for forty-eight years, providing safe rides for her student every year. She's transported parents and their children, and she's slowly moving, as she doesn't like to admit, into the third generation of riders. Her knowledge of her students and their families, the area, and her bus route has set the example for safety in the school district during her drive, her time driving. And we thank Linda for her many years of service, and we look forward to many more. So congratulations to Pam Herb, Kathy, Ray's family, and Linda for their Safe Driver Awards. This shows just a portion of the many outstanding Seneca Valley School District drivers we have. And these are just some of the highlights of a workforce that enjoy their job, that care about their students, and they bleed Seneca Valley colors. And we need more people just like them to get our kids to school. If anyone on the call tonight hasn't considered becoming a bus driver, a van driver, or a monitor, we ask that you consider it or share our openings with someone you know. You know, we have openings available and are paying sign-on bonuses for one thousand dollars for van drivers, twenty-five hundred dollars for a school bus CDL-ready driver. We are also providing an additional one thousand dollar bonus to anyone who gets their school bus CDL through ABC Transit. So our daily pay is some of the best in the area where school bus drivers can make upwards of twenty-one dollars per hour, all with flexible hours doing part-time work. So anyone interested, we need the help. We've obviously been hit hard by COVID, and we've lost a lot of drivers this year for a multitude of reasons. Not because they've left to go elsewhere, but because of personal issues. But you can call seven-two-four-four-seven-three-four-five-hundred or visit our website at abctransit.com. Again, thank you to the school board, the administration for their great support of us, and for allowing us to recognize Pam Herb, Kathy, Ray, and Linda tonight. We thank you for your continued support of ABC Transit and all of our drivers.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shale. I really appreciate it and your time. Before we move on to the next item, do any board members have any questions or any comments for Mr. O'Shale?
Mr. Hester.
Mr. O'Shale, thank you so much. I appreciate you bringing these four people in front of us. I know there are a lot, many others behind them that are taking considerable amount of time and care with our kids. And as all of us on the school board, we appreciate that so much because every one of our kids counts. Every one of our kids we have passions for, and every one of our kids should have a safe transportation to school. And I was speaking to Herb last week. I know he's taken some time off to take care of his wife, but he did tell me he is very excited about getting back to work, so we should see him sooner than later, I think, because he was itching to get back to work. He said he kept calling me just to have somebody to talk to. And he kept telling me, "I'm coming back soon," so we look forward to that. And again, Mr. O'Shale, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Any other board members? I just want to throw my two cents in that, you know, I am so glad that we put the pictures with the names because, you know, we've seen these faces over the years many times. We've seen the names for good things, you know, over the years as well, but to be able to put the names with the faces, you don't always get to do that, you know, especially, you know, as a board member. So it's good to see that, you know. Some of those names that, you know, they've been around for, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years, you know, you've heard them a lot. So it was good to see the face with them and then go, "Oh, that's who that was." But we really do appreciate all the hard work that all of you put in. We know that, you know, trying to get these drivers has been such a challenge. So again, you know, I'll throw in another, hey, anyone that's looking for something as a part-time job that pays very well, and it would be a great help to not only the community but to, you know, your friends and neighbors directly, this is the place to go. So, you know, I know we have the information on our website. You gave the information. If for some reason someone can't get it, feel free to call me. I'll give it to you. You know, we'll get you in touch with the right people. So, but again, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I would like to add something that Mr. O'Shale forgot, and that is when Reverend Moon was on our board, and he did recruiting for bus drivers. Remember what he used to say? "We have the best lunch break and longest lunch break of any job you'll ever find." So you need to add that to your tagline, compliments of Reverend Moon.
I'll remember that. Thank you.
And since we're on the subject, I guess I'll pigpile on top just a little bit and just say, and I apologize, Mr. O'Shale, I drive for Valley Lines, but, you know, the, one of the joys of my day when I get to do it, which is part-time, I fill in as a sub. And nothing against the secondary run kids. They're good kids, but they're always quiet in the morning. The joy and the excitement that the elementary kids bring every day on the bus is just, it's, anytime I get the chance to do it, it is the highlight of my day. Yeah, there's a fair amount of work that goes into getting the license and getting all ready to go, but once you're there, and I'm injured at the moment, but I can't wait to get back because I miss my kids. So just wanted to throw that on top for anybody who might even remotely be considering it.
And I will say that I drive very often in Seneca Valley School District AM and PM. I agree with you a hundred percent. It is one of the joys of my day for all the administrative functions that occur prior to runs, in between runs, and after runs. Seeing the elementary students get on, and I will say that the students in Seneca Valley are fantastic. It's a good morning, and they're always eyeballing me up because, you know, I'm usually subbing on a run. They want to know, you know, who I am, what my name is, you know, and they're typically a great group of kids to have. And I've driven out of CVE, I've driven out of Rowan, I've driven out of Evan City, I've driven out of Hayne, and every one of the kids are unique in their own way and enjoy for the day. So it's really rewarding, and we wouldn't have these long-term drivers if it weren't for the rewarding experience that they provide. That, yes, there's the small road bumps that we sometimes have with certain students or certain issues, but for the most part, it's a very rewarding experience. The drivers envelop those students, and they become their children while they're transporting them. And I just, I never would have thought, I spent twenty-five years working on the school district side. I came to this side and started driving, and I never realized the positive experiences that you would have as a driver until I actually experienced it.
Thank you very much. Any other board members with comments? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. O'Shale, thank you very much again, and anything we can do to help you, just let us know.
Thank you very much for the time.
Okay, moving on to item D, I'm actually at this time going to turn this over to Mr. Mike Jacobs to share with you some school board good news. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Ms. Andracy. Good evening, everybody. The PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Board Association publishes an honor roll to recognize school board directors at certain important milestones in their service. And they publish this honor roll as their way of thanking those individuals who exemplify leadership by giving unselfishly of their time and talents for the betterment of public schools, serving students across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And so tonight, it's my honor to recognize a few of my colleagues that are being honored on the honor roll this year, which are Mr. Jeff Widowson for sixteen years of service, Mr. Eric DiTullio for twelve years, Mr. James Nickel for twelve years, Ms. Kathy Whittle for eight years, Mr. Tim Hester for eight years, and Mr. Fred Peterson also for eight years. As I reflected on my almost two years, which seems like a lot more than two years, so I, you know, I can, these are impressive numbers. I think the one thing that's quite unique about our board is I think we do a very, very good job of assuming noble intent. Even when we disagree with each other, we know that each of us has the best interests of our board, our administration, our teachers, our students in mind. I think we do, even when we have challenging conversations within the community, even when we receive challenging emails, I think we do a good job of remembering that the vast majority of them come from a place of good intentions. And I think a culture like that is where collaboration can happen. I think a culture like that is where positive change can happen. And a culture like that, in my opinion, doesn't happen overnight. It doesn't even happen in two years. It happens in eight years, and twelve years, and sixteen years. And so, as I said, I'm honored to be the one reading from here tonight, but I'd also thank each of you for creating that culture. That's been great for me and great for our community. So again, thank you.
So, Mr. DiTullio, that is all I have for my part this evening, unless you all have questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Andracy? I would just like to make one from earlier on the homecoming. I did have my daughter attend, and she enjoyed it. So all that hard work that everyone did, thank you very much. You know, I know that it was very meaningful to at least, you know, one freshman. So I think everyone that I've talked to and I've seen pictures, you know, all over, everyone had a great time. So it was a wonderful experience for everyone. So, you know, kudos to the staff, the administration for making sure that we were able to have a homecoming. So thank you. And hearing and seeing no other requests here, we'll move on. We'll go to our COVID nineteen update. I'll introduce Dr. Vitell.
Thank you so much. I have to be honest. I'm looking forward to the day when I no longer need to update you on COVID nineteen. So the first data resource we look at is the Early Warning Monitoring System Dashboard that is from the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And in these numbers, we have a breakout of counties. So when we look at Butler County, the most recent seven-day period is October first through the seventh. And then they take that seven-day period and they compare it to the previous seven-day period, which was September twenty-fourth through the thirtieth. The good news is we are down seventy-five cases in the October first to seventh data pool from the September twenty-fourth to September thirtieth. So it's the differences in confirmed cases most recent seven days versus previous seven days. So that is good news. The incident rate is still up there. We are at three hundred and fifty-five when we look at the most recent seven days per one hundred thousand residents. And the PCR percent positivity rate is still fairly high at fifteen percent. The other data source we take a look at is, of course, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and these are all public data resources. And in this one, we go in and we pull the county numbers, we pull the ZIP code numbers, and we do a fourteen-day rolling average as well. The state does seven days compared to seven days. We do fourteen days because Sid Rapp out of the University of Minnesota and Dr. Osterholm, they like to look at the fourteen-day rolling average as well, and we know it's a fourteen-day illness. So we look at those numbers as well. And it's interesting to report in this data grab on October eleventh is our latest. The Butler County-wide incident rate for the fourteen-day rolling average is at one seventeen fifty-seven. The Butler County incident rate for the seven-day rolling is seven hundred and fifty-six cases. The Butler County incident rate for the seven-day total per one hundred thousand rolling is at four hundred and two cases. And then we go into the ZIP codes, and we grab each of those days. So there is a summary of each ZIP code, and we're collecting Calorie, we're collecting Cranberry Township, Evan City, Harmony, Mars. There are students who live in the Seneca Valley School District but have a Mars ZIP code, Renfrew, Zillion Opal. And so in each of those, when we pulled that data today, we were looking at an increase of thirteen cases from the previous day. That's fairly low when we look at the other numbers because ten-eleven, we had sixty cases in those ZIP codes. So the thirteen could change. They adjust that as the reports come in. That could go up. But again, that is good news, and we will take it. The other item is we take all of that data and we lay that next to our building data. And so when we look at the COVID nineteen dashboard that is on our website, that is updated daily by our lead school nurse, Nurse Williams. And currently, we're looking at thirty-four active student cases, one hundred and seven students in quarantine. We have four active staff cases, so we have a total of thirty-eight total active cases in the district across all of our buildings. And we also watch the breakouts of those. So, you know, it's not unusual to see three or four per building, but we watch closely when we get up beyond ten, and then we track where those are in every classroom. And so our nurses have just done a wonderful job working weekends when they get a case late weeknights. I mean, at some point, I worry about burnout for our nurses and our teachers who are keeping copious seating charts, not just in the classroom, but also at lunch, and also our bus drivers. And so anytime that our lead nurse has a concern, maybe there's three or more cases in one classroom, she'll call Dr. McCarty, she'll call Dr. McKinley or myself, and we go to that building and look at those seating charts, and she explains to us, and the building nurses are just keeping such copious notes. I'm so proud of them, and I'm so thankful that they're able to show us the data so that we can make informed decisions. So I'm very pleased that we are holding our own. I'm very pleased that we continue to stay open five days a week. That has been our goal, and we will continue to make sure that that is our goal. And then also that we can offer things like the homecoming dance outside. If you don't have high schoolers, you may not know, we had one area for the nine-ten students, one area for the eleven-twelve students to have their dance outside. And one thing that we've really focused on this year is talking to students and giving them opportunities to enhance their interpersonal skills. So while some may say, "Ah, dance is not that big of a deal," especially if you don't have teenagers, you may not think that's that big of a deal. I'm here to tell you that those interpersonal skills are very important to the development of all of our children, K to twelve. I'm here to tell you that those interpersonal skills are very important to the development of all of our children K to twelve. And when we know, we know when we talk about workforce development. That is something that our students missed out on early in the pandemic and we're trying everything in our power. To make sure that we have these normative experiences to build interpersonal skills, even pre pandemic. Uh, students being on technology more, being on their telephones more, not being outside playing as much, even pre pandemic. Not interacting as much with other students. That has always been a concern with the onset of more and more technology. So I'm very pleased that our staff and our student council advisors and our students work so hard. To put together a really beautiful homecoming. And the pep rally that the students had on Friday, there were just so many events. And SVTV streamed that pep rally live. Into classrooms at Wrangler Middle School and into offices so that, you know. Our support staff could see what was going on and it was um. Uh, you know, it's it's what educators, it's why we do what we do. To see the students interacting with one another and enjoying school. Yes, academics are first and foremost. But there are a lot of other things that go on in schools. So I'm very pleased that we were able to offer all of the homecoming activities we did for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vitell. Uh, are there any questions or comments for Dr. Vitell? From the COVID eighteen update. Looking around, I'm not seeing any, so we will move on in our agenda. Uh, next item is the financial reports that are included in your backup and they include the operations. Senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics. Food services, tax collections and capital project funds. I'm sure if you've had any questions, you already had Ms. Burton answer those for you. Now brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting. Uh, as we have been doing recently, I'm just going to read some of the guidelines that have been established and have been shared with with all the speakers. We do have a few speakers today. Um, so today, uh, the board policy, as you all know, allows for thirty minutes of public comment with each speaker allowed up to four minutes. We have extended that to one hour and allowed fifteen speakers to register. Per our policy, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. In this case, it is me. No participant, no participant may address or question board members individually. The public comment portion is just that, an opportunity for the public to provide feedback, information and opinions on upcoming board votes. Please address the board with respect and civility, just as you would expect to be treated in your home or workplace. And just as we expect students to act in our classrooms. This board has done their very best to keep politics out of the boardroom and away from our school board agenda business. This is not where we campaign, this is where we conduct official school business. So I ask that our speakers tonight refrain from anything involving elections or campaigns. I will have a timer set to go off at three minutes and thirty seconds as a signal to the speaker to wrap up their comments. At four minutes, I'll let the speaker know they've reached their limit as a secondary indicator uh to complete their statement. And finally, in accordance with our policy, the presiding officer, again, that is me. Um, may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. So those are the guidelines for the public comment. And at this time, I'm just going to turn it over to Dr. Polano to introduce our speakers, please.
Yes, thank you. Originally, there were three speakers registered to speak this evening, but recently we were made aware that one has since declined. Therefore, we have two speakers. Our first speaker this evening is Emily Drosh. Emily Drosh Drosh, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I promised I will keep this brief. Several weeks ago, I addressed the board regarding concerns around the bus driver shortage. My own child had no longer, no longer had a driver in the afternoon and another bus was completing their entire route before returning to Rowan. To collect children from my neighborhood. Since then, a compromise has been made to consolidate two bus routes. By making small adjustments to two routes, the district was able to get our children home at a much more reasonable time. I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the board and district. It was only a few weeks ago that I voiced my concerns, knowing that the district in contracted bus companies were limited in their options. And a solution has already been found. I know that this is a dynamic issue with moving pieces that may necessitate additional changes. But I'm so grateful that I was able to speak, be heard and see a realized solution. I believe this is the function of public commentary within the school board meetings and both pleased and proud. To see that the Seneca Valley Board is listening to the public and acting on our behalf. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our second and final speaker this evening is Jolene Jackie. Jolene, you should now have the option to unmute your mic to address the board.
Uh, thank you so very much. Um, yeah, my name is Jolene Jackie. Um, there there's many different times that I've actually sent different correspondence or at least thought to send some things and. I spent all day trying to prepare something and and what I had thought to prepare and and even my husband had said to me, he said, you know. You might even get up there and start talking and and completely change and 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 that I have done. I will say that. As a mom of Seneca Valley of, you know, in this community for twenty one years. Um, I really had no idea what the school board had done until the pandemic and it's something that I'm trying to. Um, be more aware of and and really for the the purpose of talking on tonight, I love hearing the bus driver stories. My children even had Herb as the driver and I will say as a parent of Seneca Valley. And I'm having a teenager, I really appreciate the homecoming and I'm glad that we're able to keep. Um, the schools open and um safe. So I appreciate what all the teachers do and 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 what you all do in that regard. Um, originally, my my whole entire um thing that I had written up, so uh. You know, purposefully and trying to use my uh three minutes and thirty seconds was just really for more of that parental choice. And and really just um presenting to all of you an idea. Um, I am um. A parent that would like more of that choice. Um, and and my idea was just to create more of a a. Service assessment to get more of a view and and more of you not just, you know, it's interesting, I see that a lot of parents are falling off and not really. Being part of um of these uh school board meetings. But it but it's been such a divisive issue and and it really just. And I thought that not just, you know, allowing the parents to to get their views and their their voices heard. Just those that maybe pay attention to the meetings or attend the meetings, but. Creating the survey, something like then which that was created back in summer of twenty twenty. On like a return to school and and I didn't know that you're all tasked with so many issues. So it's something that I was just willing to put out there. To help create it, to help spearhead it, to help, you know, create maybe a a survey, an assessment to get really the true. Um, you know, what the 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 district would want. Um, and and all different sides of the opinion, um, and and you know, for pro mask and and. That's where, you know, just looking for more of that parental choice and just me as a parent. Um, you know, asking that, you know, possibly those that have either had COVID and they have the natural antibodies. Or that those that, um, you know, have been vaccinated. And and allowing those that, you know, if they feel safe with a mask, go ahead and wear it. And those that don't allow us to choose. And you know that it seems repetitive, um, and you know, each week and and bringing it up, but just as me as that mom. Um, you know, just saying, you know, really just allowing us and and maybe for the children to choose. Um, and so that was on my one point. And then my second point was just to ask some questions um around curriculum. Um, and and just trying to, again, being that parent that's more aware and and what you all do and and what goes on more. And shame on me, I should have uh been more involved prior pandemic and it really wasn't until my graduating um senior of twenty twenty. I really realized how much um voice and and decision really goes into the board. So. And um, but, so that's where, you know, really just asking, you know, about the new learning of twenty twenty five. And that the re- the district has recently adopted. And I thank you, um, Mrs. Andressi for sharing um some information with me. And I'll end on this note, but if you don't mind, maybe in the future, you know, what was, why was it chosen um for our students? Was it in the best interest? And in the future, maybe share with the community, um, why we adopted it and how it will benefit um the education for our students. So. Um, that's all. And and again, just me trying to be more involved as a as a mom and a parent and um. Thank you for uh the time to speak and uh thank you for what you do and and everybody at Seneca Valley.
Thank you very much. And that was our last speaker, correct? So, okay.
Yes.
Let me make sure. Um. All right, then we're gonna move on in our meeting agenda and. On these, I am going to be seeking a motion that we approve the following. To approve the minutes of our work session meeting of September thirteenth, twenty twenty one. And our regular meeting of September twentieth, twenty twenty one, as included in your backup. The treasurer's report including your backup, the general fund bills in the amount of one million six hundred and twenty two thousand nine hundred dollars and ninety one cents. Including your backup and the construction fund bills and a grand total of four million four hundred and seventy three thousand eighty dollars and eighty two cents. Also including your backup. Could I have a motion, please?
I moved.
Was that, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, Ms. Harrison.
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Widowson, can't be writing and see at the same time, sorry, folks. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on any of these issues or questions? Not seeing any. Uh, Lisa, if you call the role, please.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson.
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. Move on to administrative action. I'll introduce Mr. Nickel, please.
Thank you, sir. I would like to make the motion with regards to the following three administration action items. The first. Is our conference requests. They are detailed in your backup. The second is uh two different transportation contracts to approve each of the following transportation contracts. The detail for them is in your backup, but in summary. One family to transport their child to and from Wrangler Middle School. At a cost of nine dollars and sixty three cents per day during the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. And one family to transport their child to and from Wrangler Middle School at a cost of twenty three dollars and thirty cents per day. During the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. And finally, to approve a student waiver, to approve the student adjudication waiver that was detailed in our backup and discussed in executive session. Uh, that is my motion, Mr. President.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Peters. Oh, I saw Mr. Peterson first, so I'm gonna give it to him. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Any discussion or questions on any of these items? Hearing and seeing none. Lisa, if you call the question or call the role, please.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson.
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to instruction action and I'll introduce Ms. Harrison then.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following instruction items. First would be the coed cricket club. Approve the establishment of the coed cricket club. At no cost to the districts and under the supervision of volunteer sponsor, Mr. David Reichardt. Details were in the backup. Second item is Slippery Rock University Transition Achievement Program. Approve the agreement for the SRU Transition Achievement Program with SRU. To provide transition services for the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year as provided in the backup. Third item is BC three college within high school CWHS partnership agreement. Approve the CWHS partnership agreement between Seneca Valley School District. And Butler County Community College from July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Is bright in the backup and we have two grant dispersments, grant permission to apply for and disperse of approved the following grants. The first one is the first tech challenge grant funded by the Arconic. Foundation in the amount of one thousand dollars to fund. The cost of equipment fees and supplies related to the twenty twenty one, twenty two first tech challenge. And the second is homeless children and youth grant in the amount of sixty two thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars. Funded by the United States Department of Education to support students are who are experiencing homelessness. To meet their physical and mental health needs.
Thank you very much for the motion, Ms. Harrison. Is uh their second?
Second.
Ms. Bradel, thank you very much. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Just a quick one, Mr. President. I just, I think it's great that we now have, we're gonna have a coed cricket club. I didn't know if. Anyone might have a little color commentary on how that came to be. I think it's cool. I didn't. Uh, is there a cricket league? I just love a little color commentary if anybody hasn't.
I don't know if any, I don't know if anybody's qualified to to talk about that on the screen, but I will give it a shot. That students came to Ms. Lewis uh here early this fall and and there was interest in trying it. Uh, they got the requisite number of signatures and uh got a sponsor to to work with them. And they're gonna fundraise and and get the equipment necessary and and give it a try. So. Uh, there is student interest in this and we we thought we'd give it a shot.
Sounds great. Thanks, Matt.
I would, I would add pass a message along that I would be very interested in not only watching but being taught the game. So as the club gets going, tell them that they're gonna have to explain it to, you know, a bunch of people on the school board. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Peterson. But you're on mute, Ms. Fred.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, I cannot be more supporter of the Slippery Rock University Transition Achievement Program, the TAP program. Uh, there is a pretty good, uh, if you read through the agreement, proposed agreement. It's a pretty good description, but I wonder if we could ask Dr. Roberts to tell us just a little bit more about this project and how our program. And and how it works into the the standard curriculum.
Yeah, I'd be glad to say a few words about that. So TAP is a program um using Slippery Rock students and Slippery Rock professors. Um, that provides a transition for our uh high school students with uh special needs. Um, to provide transition beyond their high school experience. Um, so uh, so many students have a great high school experience here and many of them uh continue as students. Uh, up until the age of twenty one, but uh we're always looking for ways to uh expand their horizons, give them experience. In um the real world, as it were, um and Slippery Rock TAP program allows us to do that. So the students uh get to work in an office environment at the university. Um, they get to dine in the uh dining room and experience. Um, maybe a not a high school cafeteria, but uh something along those lines. And uh the students gain the opportunity to um look at what it would be like to be a post-secondary student. So we we kind of open up those opportunities for students and this is typically for students that are um in the age range seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. That range um in our high school program.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. I appreciate that. Um. Uh, I was amazed at the list of the various work sites that the kids could access. Really sounds like it's a very all encompassing kind of a program to prepare these kids to go out into the real world. So I appreciate your efforts.
Any other board members with a question or comment? I'll say, you know, typically my my favorite part of the meeting is the I LED the pledge. But when we get to things like this and we see cricket club and, you know, the the TAP program or CHS. I know that sounds geeky in a way, but you know, that's something that's great for the the, not only the the students where they get the the college and high school experience. But for the parents as well, because, well, let's be honest, it's cheaper to pay for it now than later. Uh, and the grants is always, you know, we we always are amazed at the hard work that goes into it and, uh, you know, a lot of the names that we see all the time. Dr. Roberts, uh, Andy Mersing, Mr. Fortinato, uh, you know. All these folks are doing it over and over just to help our students. Um, you know, and it, I think this one basically hits everyone from soup to nuts too. As far as, you know, this instruction is truly, you know, getting everyone from, you know, help for the special needs students all the way to. Um, you know, the homeless of of our community that we're not even aware of a a lot of times. So again, excellent work. Thank you very much. Uh, seeing that we have no other questions or comments, then Lisa, I'm asking you to call a roll call, please.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to business and finance action. Uh, Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you, sir. I will make.
Thank you, sir. I will make a motion to approve the following business finance action. Approve the appointment of PNC Capital Markets LLC as investment banker and Dinsmore and Scholl, uh, LLP as bond counsel related to both outstanding and anticipated debt financings in connection with the school district's proposed and developing plans for capital improvements and facilities, as included in the backup.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Jacobs. Is there a second?
So moved.
So, Mr. Nickel.
Yep.
Any questions or comments on, on this motion? Uh, I'm going to actually throw Ms. Bertner a question here. Um, you know, this is something we've been talking about and working on for years. And, uh, PNC Capital Markets, um, and Dinsmore Scholl has been our, um, you know, our investment banker and bond counsel for how many years, Ms. Bertner? Uh, and, you know, just since we got some folks here, you know, they're watching a little bit about this is the beginning process of a bigger process. So if you wouldn't mind just giving a little 30 second, if you can, 30 seconds on what, what we do here.
Correct. Uh, um. Who had, PNC has been on board goodness, uh, probably six years or so. And they kind of migrated through the professional involved from a different form. Dinsmore has been with us longer than I have been here. Um, I would say Dinsmore goes back at least 20 years. Um, and Chris Brewer being in that role for quite a long time. It, this is actually, this action tonight hires the professional team to do the third in a series of three bond issues related to, uh, the most the biggest, the biggest project in our capital project plan being the Ermun Crest Elementary School. This allows us to complete that project and allows the, the ongoing long-range plan to, to continue. Um, it, it's not a one and done. The, the plan has been, again, ongoing for at least 10 years, and it will continue to, 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 to continue after the Ermun Crest Elementary School is completed. It, it has at least five, seven years in the works as we speak now. And, um, so we need to think that way about financing the plan. So this, this is the first step that will take several months to come to fruition. Um, to complete the Ermun Crest Elementary School. But then it also lays the groundwork for continuing the long-range multi-year capital project plan.
Thank you, Ms. Bertner.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson.
Yes.
Mr. De Tulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to personnel action, and I'll introduce Mr. Widowson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, under personnel action, I'd like to make the following motion to approve the appointments, the addendum, the leaves, retirement, and the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Widowson. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hester. Uh, we've already discussed these in executive, so we'll move right to a roll call. Lisa, if you will, please.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. De Tulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. Uh, we are in, uh, receipt of eight pieces of communication emails, uh, since our last meeting. And the board has all received those and, uh, have responded as necessary. So that will bring us, before we adjourn, I'm going to ask if there's anyone that has anything to be brought before the board. And seeing none, I actually do, and, um, on the Peasers, since I said, as you know, on the Peasers board, uh, we had our meeting last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Unfortunately, I could only make the Thursday and Friday meeting. I missed some of the presentation from Wednesday, but there was actually some good news. And I'm going to do a share screen so everyone can see this. So just give me a, a second to make sure I don't mess this up. And this should work, hopefully. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. So, uh, just wanted to introduce a little bit, uh, on the Peasers and, and go over. This meeting was interesting. We, we started talking about budget for next year and went over, uh, results for the end of the year. So just real quick on budget, uh, one of the things I wanted to show folks is the cost-saving initiatives that have, uh, been instituted at Peasers has an annual savings of 6.4 million based on, um, a $13 per, or we're under, um, the peer average by $13 on administration costs per member. So, you know, there's been a lot of, um, news articles on, you know, how Peasers compares to its peers, uh, in different things, uh, have, would play into why that is different. But one of the things it doesn't is administration cost. And again, as you can see, $13 under the peer average is what the Peasers organization works on. And the other part is the administrative budget that's being proposed, uh, is a, a further savings and has been for past five years annualized and only a 1% increase per year, which I thought was amazing and, and should be shared. The second part that's always interesting to see is the ARC or the annual required contribution. Uh, as you've heard me say for, uh, the whole time I've been on Peasers, the ARC hasn't been fully funded by the state of Pennsylvania, except for the last six years. And as you can see, uh, back in, you know, the Great Recession, we were only at 39%, or a little bit over 40 when it hit down to a low of 27%. So the, the ARC is the actuarial required contribution to keep us where we're supposed to be from a funding standpoint. And that dropped to 27% uh, since 2017, roughly. We've been getting 100% of that ARC from the legislature. So that's been very good, and you're going to see why in the next slide. Um, so this is basically the source and use of funds for the year. So basically over here, um, if you can see that, that's the 59.030 billion dollars that the fund was valued at as of July 1st of 2020. We had contributions, and those are contributions from the state school districts and, uh, all the teachers, administrator, and staff that contributed into the Peasers program as well. It was almost $6 billion. And then our, our huge increase here was the net investment income of $14.7 billion. So that was the largest ever. Um, so that gave us a historic and unprecedented growth for Peasers. Um, so the fund now started, you know, at 59 billion. It's now at 72 billion, which is the largest increase ever. This is just showing, you know, hey, here's what we did, uh, for the year ending June 30th of 2020. We started 59, uh, billion. We ended at, you know, 59.1, we ended at 59.0. And now we're at 72. So you can really see where that growth really occurred, and it's really helped the fund out. You can see out here graphically, it shows that, you know, basically in 2009, it was the lowest year ever, um, since 2003. I was the largest one-year decline, and this was the Great Recession of 19 billion. And here you can see on the right side that we increased 13.5 billion, the largest one-year increase in fund history. So now we're sitting at that 72.5 billion, um, which is the highest we've ever been. So it's the high watermark. Peasers has never, uh, been worth more than it is right now. This is, um, the last of the slides. And, and really all this is, is, you know, there's been criticism over the fund performance. So real quick, um, the blue bar is what the actual performance of the Peasers Fund has been. The green bar is what is the measurement, the, the benchmark, the blended policy, uh, benchmark, if you will. And then this orange or yellow, depending on what your screen looks like, is how much we've outperformed. So as you can see in the quarter, year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date, one year, three-year, five-year, 10-year, 15, and 20 years, Peasers has outperformed what it was supposed to. And the yearly, um, actuarial required, uh, rate that is used for all the calculations is 7%. So as you can see, we have more than outperformed that, you know, in the last one year, three year, and five year. Uh, even in 10 years, when that rate was lower, we did. So back in 15 and 20, that wasn't 7%. It's only been the last, uh, six to seven years that it's been at that 7%. And we beat that the whole time. So, uh, some of that criticism of, of the Peasers Fund is just not, uh, warranted. And I just wanted to share that with everyone to show them that. There were some other things that I think, um, I don't know about the community, but I think the, the board will find interesting. The first one was that the retirements were up 8% from, uh, 2020 and 2021. So we, you know, we're, we knew that we had teacher shortage coming. I think it's been exasperated, exasperated by, you know, the stress of, of COVID. So we saw an additional 8% increase in that. So that's going to be a little bit challenging, I think, in the future, um, especially when there's not as many teachers coming out of college either. Um, some of the other things we talked about was the fact that state funding, uh, it's going to become challenging, uh, in the two years. Uh, is when they, when I say they, the actuaries and everyone at the state level is, is assuming that that's when we're going to see it hit in that two-year timeframe. The good news is, uh, because of how well things happened last year, the state was able to transfer $2.6 billion into the rainy day fund that we've heard so much about. So that's there. We're taking advantage of it while it's good to, to build that up. Couple other things just to end on. The first one was one of the challenges of the new, uh, retirement, uh, system that was put into place under Act 120 is new teachers now have a, a hybrid plan. It's part defined contribution DC and part defined benefit, a pension, so to speak. So with that, one of the problems, I shouldn't say problems, one of the challenges is instructing new teachers what to do with that. How, how does that work? What's it going to look like? They can't ask their peers because their peers, for the most part, have a pure benefit. So those students coming out are having some challenges. They're not students, their teachers coming out of teaching school are having some challenges of what does that mean to me and how does it look? So one of the, the, the things that we were looking at is being able to work with some of the Pennsylvania universities, at least to, to begin with, to have a, an education on the finances of what does that look like as a teacher, since that's going to be your profession, you know, incorporating that into the college classroom. So hopefully that'll be good. And the other one, which, you know, we're kicking around is including it into the onboarding, having the school districts help out. And granted, it can't be that extensive because it's part of everything else we do from an onboarding standpoint, but a little bit more than, than what these folks are getting now. So those are some of the things I just wanted to update the board on, some of the things we might see coming down, um, in the next, you know, few years. So I know it was quick, uh, some of it, you know, was more dry and interesting and, you know. So are there any questions from anyone that I could answer? Looking around, hearing and seeing none, then if there's no board member that has anything else, then I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Thank you. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Bye.